Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Are there any additions to this evening's agenda, council?
Yeah, I'd like to give a very brief update on a sustainable urban forestry training and assistance program.
Okay, we'll add that under committee reports. We will not be having a presentation tonight on the city greenhouse for public appearances. In that spot, I'll have Rick Shattuck address the council. So we'll move then to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the November 24th council meeting and approval of minutes from the December 6th special council meeting. We have a resolution for employment from the water department, approval of a liquor license for La Hacienda, and approval of claims in the amount of $961,458.60. Are any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next council, we have a presentation and a proclamation declaring January radon action month, and we have Dan Miller with us from the Jefferson County Environmental Health. Evening, Dan.
Evening.
I can't believe it's been a year since we talked about radon.
I'm Dan Miller, head of the Jefferson County Environmental Health Department, and I appreciate the opportunity once again come and speak to the mayor and the city council about radon. And I want to thank them for proclaiming January as radon action month for the past six years, which has encouraged residents to learn about and test for radon. Radon is a colorless, odorless, radioactive gas that comes from the natural breakdown of uranium in the soil. Radon is everywhere and gets into buildings through cracks and openings and foundations and slabs. When we breathe radon gas in, it causes cellular damage which can lead to cancer. Radon is the second-leading cause of lung cancer in the U.S., and Iowa has the highest percentage of homes with elevated radon. So the old saying, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure," holds very true for radon. The good news is it's easy to test for, which is the only way to know if your home has an elevated radon level. It's also easy to mitigate. The EPA has set the action level for radon at four picocuries per liter of air and recommends that all homes be tested. Living in a house at four picocuries per liter is like smoking eight cigarettes a day. We've had readings as high as 59.2 picocuries per liter. Last year, the local Lions Club donated 50 radon test kits. I received 54 results, and 27 were high. Of those, 18 homes were mitigated. For the past six years, around 50% of the homes tested were at or above the EPA action level. So that means there is a 50% chance your home has elevated levels of radon, and again, the only way to know is to test for it. Several cities and counties in Iowa have radon-resistant new construction policies in place. Licensed daycare centers must test for radon every two years. Schools have to submit a report about testing or a plan to test to the Department of Education by the end of this year. Fairfield Community Schools have set a three-year schedule for testing their school buildings, and MSAE is also setting up a schedule for testing. I encourage the city of Fairfield and local businesses to test their buildings for radon. This year, the Lions Club has donated another 50 radon test kits. Test kits will be given out starting January 2nd between 9:00 and noon at the Jefferson County Environmental Health Department located at the Jefferson County Highway Department at 901 North 8th Street. There will be public service announcements coming out soon. We want to create a healthier community, which is evident by our healthiest state initiative, Blue Zones project, and many other projects. Reducing radon is simple prevention that will improve the overall health of our community. That is why I'm asking the council to once again proclaim January as radon action month. For more information on radon, you can go to our website, JeffersonCountyIowa.com, all spelled out. In the left-hand menu, click on Environmental Health and scroll down to radon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. You know, after last year's presentation, we tested our home again, and we were at a very safe level, but hadn't done it since we moved in 14 years ago, and I think it's felt good to know. Tests are very easy to perform also.
Correct. Any other questions?
Any questions, council?
Just a quick question on demographics. Is it across the board, new homes to old homes, or is it mostly older homes that are experiencing this problem?
Any home can have high radon level, and it really doesn't matter if you have a full basement, or if you're on a slab, or if you have crawl space. Any home can have radon seeping into it.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion then to approve the proclamation which is signed declaring January radon action month.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next council, Mr. Rick Shattuck has a presentation. Rick?
Rick Shattuck, I'm proud owner of 806 North 4th Street, which is a house across the street from the university, and always endeavor to make it look good and presentable for students walking by, children walking by, and a place where parents would feel comfortable letting their kids go off for Halloween, but not this year. It's been reconstructed in the front. On the sidewalk, it's torn up for some water pipes, and it's supposed to be finished by the end of November, but it's December now, and it still looks like a construction zone. And this began was in 2010. I saw some paint on the sidewalk. I thought, you know, who's painting the sidewalk? Maybe it's vandalism. But a neighbor told me that the town is putting a strip of paint on there for any sidewalk that's not perfectly level and needs to be replaced. So, but I was told that I could hire my own contractor and have the sidewalk done professionally, and I chose Tom Pryor, who's a very good contractor, very honest Mormon, just has excellent references and has done work for me before. And he did a very good job repairing the sidewalk. It looked great. So then, about a month later, I came back and I saw that was torn up, and somebody replaced it. And I found that the town replaced this perfectly done sidewalk, and I think out of the pay that I gave Tom, about 300 was for the sidewalk, and he also made a drainage pipe for my garage. And so I found that I would be charged $700. That's outrageous, for three slabs of concrete. That's a ripoff. I would never choose to pay that amount for the sidewalk. So I objected, but I was found that that would be, you know, continue to get billed for that, and if I don't pay the $700, it would be, could be on my taxes, you know. It would be, I could lose my house over this issue. So I've been having to pay. And then in September, the sidewalks, these overpriced sidewalk slabs I'm paying for were torn up again because they're doing repairs to the sidewalk. So the $700 that I'm being asked to pay is now crumpled up somewhere in a landfill. So I'd like to, you know, pass around some of the photos of the house, and I would like to at least get a, you know, a discount on this now-gone sidewalk, and that's what the house looks like presently. And in addition, the sidewalk that was done by whoever does it for the town made it so that my car, when it comes up, there's a sharp angle, so it hits the bottom muffler of my car. So I would like to respectfully ask, if I can submit these documents, these are photos of the job being done by Tom Pryor, and sorry that the green ink went out just before I went to print these. And I'd like to work out a compromise at least for the...
Is there someone from the city? Darrell, do you know the project that's going on that would cause that sidewalk to be?
The city made replacement from stone on north by culture.
Okay. And then that's, and what state is that? I'll just hang on a second, Melanie, until he's finished, but I just want to start there.
I'm doing it. Sorry, thank you very much.
So if you don't mind, I want just to ask our engineer what project is going on and what stage it's in and what will happen to that sidewalk when the project's done.
So that is water main replacement. That is occurring on that, on Mr. Shattuck's side of the street is where the new water main, as well as the old water main are both on that side of the street. So the sidewalks along there were, or are torn up, were taken out, and sidewalk replacement was budgeted with the project. The contractor is behind schedule. That I do agree with Mr. Shattuck on that part, so that the concrete work would be done or won't be done until the spring, but it is the city's intent to replace the sidewalk in the spring.
Just a quick question. So in 2010, when he was talking about the city sidewalk replacement program and that it was marked, he replaced a panel of it or something, and then the city came and replaced. I'm assuming that the city came and replaced because what he did was not adequate?
Yes. The area to be replaced was 184 square feet of 4-inch and 84 square feet of 6-inch. I brought a copy of our assessment that was done on his property back in 2010.
So he only did a portion of that?
That assessment, I believe that assessment was done after his work was done, so whether some of it needed to be redone or this was in addition to the work that he did, I don't have a good documentation as far as whether it was work that was redone or not.
Melanie? When residents do their own sidewalk repair work rather than the city, do they get specs from the city as to how it's to be done?
Okay. Thank you, guys. Yes, yes, they did.
Rick, did you, well, we have Melanie right now, but I guess...
Go ahead. And I also have pictures from before construction as well as during construction. The stairs in front of his property are, they're inaccessible right now. There is cone on the stairs. The sidewalk was holding up the bottom step, and so that the sidewalk would have to get poured under the steps to make them safe or not wiggly, if you want the technical term.
Wiggly.
Wiggly. Then that's all that happened.
Do you have a plan for when that concrete's going to be poured back?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So Rick, what's torn up right now will be replaced, you understand that 100%?
Yes.
That will be replaced. So the discrepancy from a couple of years ago was that it sounds like there wasn't as much sidewalk replaced as we required. The city then did that and build you? That's...
Well, I would object. Tom did a very good job.
But he may not have done enough panels?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it was his work per se as much as it was that there was additional work to be done.
Well, I would just ask, in light of the fact that I've...
Because otherwise, we wouldn't have done anything.
Correct.
We would have looked at the project as complete.
And we addressed that issue back then. He brought that forward back at the time, and that was addressed, the first time it was replaced, before it was redone again.
Well, it was hard to tell the difference between what Tom did and what was done later. So, but I would appreciate maybe, you know, I have, instead of 700, maybe, what the difference, 350, that I would be billed...
But I'm not sure I understand what you're asking, then.
Well, if I could have the, I'm being billed $700.
From 2010?
Yeah, from the 2010. And in light of the fact that I already paid someone $300, Tom Pryor, to do that, and then also I did some work done on my muffler because it was done at such a sharp angle, the sidewalk and then my little driveway, and that I am having to wait a very long time to have the sidewalk in front of my home look presentable.
Okay, so of the $700,000 assessment, you're requesting...
For 700. I'm not asking that one.
You said 700, you said... Right.
We can knock a little off that.
I'll split it.
Big numbers are coming later. Of the 700, 700 assessment, you're requesting how much then to be?
Well, 350.
350, so half of that.
Another 300 plus muffler cost plus.
Question?
Sure.
Just could we do a timeline in this? So you got the first notice that your sidewalk needed repair in 2010, was it?
Yes.
And then you had it replaced when?
In 2010.
And then, was there any...
In July, July 2nd.
Was there any discussion after that, before they ripped it up and replaced it again? Or no?
No. I just came, told to my surprise, and said, "Somebody redid it," so.
That's part that doesn't seem quite...
And it didn't have any painted strip on it?
Contractor wouldn't have redone it. That's how the program works.
I mean, to come and rip up so many sidewalks they got to pay for, at least they should have a discussion.
Well, but that happened all over, John. People replaced stuff, but it wasn't, it didn't meet the specifications.
That's what we did, everybody.
And so that's on them, you know, for not having proper...
And so then, so this was 2010 this all happened?
Right.
And why are we waiting till December 2014, other than the ironic fact that it's all ripped up again?
Yeah, recently because, you know, geez, enough's enough. So I'm waiting now probably till spring to have the sidewalk done.
But I just don't understand the time delay. I don't, I mean, why are we dealing with it four years later?
We denied it. What he's saying now is, "We came back in and tore it out again, so why should he have to pay the whole thing being back in?"
Well, I mean, it's really a separate, completely separate issue, the fact it's being torn up again, but I...
Right. I mean, it's a non-issue.
So you brought it up to the housing committee, I mean, the property committee?
We dealt this two, three years ago whenever it first came to light.
It came to the whole council?
It came to committee.
Property committee, probably.
Yeah. I don't remember if it counted or not.
All right. I'd like to just, John, let's just take his request for 350,000 as their...
$350,000. What a god, it's not on my mind tonight.
$350 rebate on the sidewalk work. Is there any interest in approving that?
No.
Seeing no motion, I'm sorry, we're going to stick with the position, I think, that we had several years ago, that it was replaced. We no longer have the same sidewalk inspector. If he were available tonight, we'd have him answer why, but we don't have that at this time.
Right, request of somebody...
We will, you know, get that sidewalk repaired in the spring.
Yeah, well, if somebody does, like I had it replaced by Tom, one would think that, again, they would mark it if it was still a problem, but there was no paint mark, so that's why.
No, that's only done once. Much, I think it would be, the inspection was for different reasons, and again, because we don't have that inspector that we can speak with right now. I couldn't give you a reason why, but it's a different process. The marking was really done to designate those areas that needed to be repaired at the time.
Well, you know what I mean. If it's repaired, then it's not marked anymore, so it shouldn't have been torn up.
Rick, if we were discussing this, you know, like after the property committee turned you down and you brought it to the full council at that time, you know, it might have been something, you know, a little more to consider, but at this, so many years later, I'm...
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you. Next council, we have a presentation from our Recreation Facilities Task Force. Tom McMahon is here. Tom?
You just keep those digits where you're talking.
Yeah, I know. I'm waiting for your presentation. I could be adding a couple more zeros.
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the project and where we're at today. We've, I actually don't remember the last time I was here. It's been a while. So the good news is the pool is moving along, holes are dug, concrete's going in. We're on schedule. Thrilled to see that, especially with that really cold early snap that kind of affected us, so it's great. We're on time, still think we're going to open early in next summer, so our citizens will be able to enjoy that. The most recent thing on the gymnasium, we've received the schematic drawings from our architect. We've also received a final estimate. Because we have the schematics, we're better able to go through the cost estimates for that facility. You might recall that we had, the last time we had met, we talked about an $8,845,000 project in total, and with this new estimate, they came up with roughly $225,000 in additional costs. Some of that was related, large parts were related to electric issues, and it's good. We had better documents to do it. The task force, along with some folks from the city, got together and did some value engineering. We were able to reduce a number of items, take them out for cost's sake. And the task force, much like with the pool, we're recommending that the city do bids with some alternates, bid alternates. So they're not in our budget, but we really want them. We really think they need to happen. The two largest items, and I think it's important that you know, are the windows on the north and south walls, so without them, we have no natural light going in. And that cost estimate is about $108,000. And then, and that's the one that the committee is saying, we really need to somehow figure out how we get that in. So at this point, it's a bid alternate. The other larger item was doing landscaping. You know, our comments are, that could probably happen whenever. Doesn't have to happen day one. So we have worked with Newman Munson, Carly Nelson, have a plan. I think I sent around some copies of the renderings of what we now see happening, and our hopes are to go to out to bid, release the bids on January 5th. So a couple of weeks away, which is why we're here tonight. Looking for your permission on that. There are still a couple of open items that the committee is, we've asked a couple of sub-task forces to look at, one of which is the court flooring. Originally, we were discussing a poured court, still in the mix, and it's in our budget. However, we're being encouraged to look at another court that might save us roughly $15,000, and at this point, all those numbers are important to us. We're looking at those. Additionally, something we don't currently have in our budget is to provide the building with the ability to, after the fact, come back in with doing solar panels, create the electricity for our facility, predominantly thinking about paying for the air conditioning in the summer and how that all matches up. The most immediate thing we need to do, and Carly Nelson is telling us, we shouldn't do this as a bid alternate. They need to know what's the building and what support are we going to have in there. So we're hoping to do that. The task force is behind putting solar in. I think it's, you know, part of our green effort. It's part of all the great things we're doing. It's the way, for those of you that have looked, if you looked at it from the east entrance, the north entrance, you're not going to see them. They're, I think, going to be well-done. We don't have enough information today to say it's a go, that it makes sense we should do this. We think it should happen. We think it should be good, and Michael is in on these meetings with me. So it's, the downside is, we have to decide to add $21,000 more in cost that we don't currently have to the project. So with the bid alternates, we have a chance of getting the amounts in, we have a chance of raising more money, but between now and January 5th, I'm not sure we have, without somebody stepping forward, an opportunity to raise the 21,000, unless, of course, the city stepped up or stepped up a commitment that if we didn't get there, we'd help through the process. So we're thrilled with where the project's at. We're still on target for all these opening dates that we talked about nine months ago, and we all understand construction, so. And then, you know, finally, I'll say, from a fundraising standpoint, I think, you know, it's been in the paper, of course, but we did reach out and make, we thought we made our fundraising goal, but one of the things that happened for us is we double-counted some money from a entity, one of our large donors who I had no clue, when that check came in, we deposited it, sent them a thank-you note in that name, and unfortunately, it was, we know them by a different name, and everybody in this room knows them by a different name, and nobody that I was working with knew who they were. So we had double-counted some money. This came at the absolute last minute, okay, three days after the last minute. We'd already said we made it. The mistake happened, so we were under the water on that, so I offered to make up half the difference if the city would make up the other half. So one of our things today is to talk about that a little later in the agenda, but by and large, I mean, we're there, $1 million from the state, I'm beyond thrilled with. You know, it's just, the whole process, as you know, two votes, lots of work, but we're there. So with that, I'd open it up to questions?
Right, thank you, Tom. One, first question I had was from Melanie. Do we ever get that second pour in? I know the, so are we completely poured as far as the pool vessel?
They poured Thursday, last Thursday, and they'll pour this Thursday, so they're very comfortable with the schedule.
Very good. And at one point several weeks ago, we had one major pour that was going to take us through the majority of the winter, and if we had any warm days and additional pours, we would be able to, we would be secure likely for our opening date on June 1st, so that does sound like we are in really great shape. Then the, so Tom, the two elements that you're talking about, then the solar, again, the reason that that's not able to be an add-on is because you have to make a decision now about structurally what is going to be in your roof for the construction process.
That's correct.
And that's an amount of 21,000?
Yes.
Okay. The other amount that we're going to talk about is $20,000, which would be, the city would basically take the responsibility for, through the CAT grant process, so that our $1 million is secure. $40,000 was the private shortfall, $20,000 made up by the McMahon family, and $20,000 to the city, and we're going to talk about our bar... And we're going to talk about our borrowing that we're going to be approving tonight and where that $20,000 is in there.
Correct.
Okay. The, I think the other great news is that, you know, getting a look at, the first look at some of the construction amounts is encouraging. I mean, even with leaving some of those things in the bid alternate, we're definitely, you know, in the ballpark, and our project...
Yeah. Honestly, Mayor, I'd tell you, we're, the task force is thrilled. We're short, we know it. We feel like we've got some time to get there, and the task force, without a doubt, would like to see the windows happen. So, it's going to take some more work. Maybe we get a lower bid. I mean, a lot of things could come, so...
Exactly.
Yep, we're very thrilled with that. Joy, you'll be happy if you haven't received an $850,000 check. Should be in the next day or two.
I don't think I've seen that.
Well, I know the young lady that...
That's what I was referring to earlier.
I know the young lady that signed it, and she said, "That's the largest check I've ever signed." I had fun signing that, so...
Yeah.
All right.
I have a follow-up. So, this infrastructure for the solar power, the mayor was saying, it's structurally on the roof is what, they have to put additional support up on the roof?
We need load. We need to account for more load in the roof. And so, that's its structure for the load. It also requires, and I'm sorry if I'm going too deep into it, but we really need to do a second transformer area, or what would you call it? Yeah. So, the meter, so we separate the charges. That'll make the financing of doing the project much cleaner, much better. Give us the ability to make it work. So, that piece is $6,000. The strengthening of the roof is a 15, so total of $21,000.
Okay.
And I have a question from Melanie, just on the side, if you don't mind. The fact that gas is so low, is, you think that's going to affect our bids? Are we going to see things coming in lower because of that? Is that going to help?
We're not putting too much petroleum products in our...
Well... But people traveling in or something?
You mean mobilization.
Mobilization, yeah.
That's a question for Chris Smith, but anything can help at this point. I'll just put it that way.
I wouldn't.
Don't plan on it.
If we were doing asphalt parking lots, things like that, I mean, our asphalt prices should be good this year.
I'm not betting any different.
Chip and seal prices should be good this year.
Okay. Well, I just hope that...
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I just want, I want to explore the solar. Scott and Troy, Van Bie Troy is the contractor that provided the project for the center. Can you talk a little bit about what the projected savings would be potentially? Or is there a way that this can be justified at this point?
So, we were looking at project costs in the vicinity of $293,656 is what we're looking at for the project if we were to do it. We would be looking over a 25-year time span, savings of about $215,000 with the money that we're talking about being spent on this. That's the system cost, but we'd be looking at a PPA for this. We're looking at a quarter of that, so the $293,000 coming from the city at that point, and then we would do financing outside of that.
$290,000?
$293,000, which would be the cost of the system, but we'd be doing it in a PPA financing rate.
So, the cost of the city, or to the rec center, would be about $73,000, so 25% of the project cost.
So, financing with our power bill from the...
So, let me start that.
Maybe, we should probably back up.
Yeah, let's talk what upfront costs are initially to pay for it, and then backdoor return over 25 years to pay for it back.
Because I thought there was a separate entity putting this up.
There is.
So, there would be no cost to the city.
Well, the way that we're looking at this actually working is that it would be a lot easier for us to do this if there was some upfront cost. So, we're looking at a little over $70,000. It's one-quarter of the cost of the system that it would be to put in place. We'd be doing it through a financing partner, taking that, it reduces the return on investment, the timeframe for it. So, there would be some upfront costs. And we're looking at this realistically with the really low utility bill that they have. So, but at $73,000, at the time when we're capable of doing this, and there may be more fundraising that could come up through this process at the time, at the time for that, you know, you would be getting over $230,000 over a 25-year period. So, that's a pretty good return on $73,000.
In savings, in electric savings. Okay.
Troy, who pays off, who pays that other $60,000 note?
So, that would, that would happen through the, who pays it off?
There's an investment entity that's...
Why, I mean, where does...
So, basically, the financing arm would pay for the project. And they'd be taking a quarter of that to help the financing become a little bit shorter payback.
And how do they get the rest of their money paid back? Through what we would have paid on utilities?
That's correct. And over, between, right now, what we could estimate, somewhere between nine and 11 years, that would be paid off.
So, that entity would be selling you your power?
That's correct.
Okay. So, you would actually have a power purchase agreement, John, with an investment entity that would be selling you the power, and that's how they would pay off?
Instead of taking a line, we're going to now pay this investment entity?
Right.
So, that's the new rules that have been brought to us through the Supreme Court ruling on PPAs in Iowa. So, that's what Ideal Energy has been investing our time into, seeing how that we can incorporate these on different buildings. We knew that this was a project. We were brought into it early on. We were just recently brought to our attention that we had gone this far in the project. So, we jumped on this and tried to dial in some numbers as best we can with what we have on, you know, on the building, on the load calculations.
What's the history of this entity, and how, do we know they'll be here in 25 years?
It's Iowa State Bank.
Iowa State Bank.
That would help if we knew.
Well, we were just about to get to that. But, and I'm sorry, this is a little hodgepodge, because I wasn't expecting that there'd be a, you know, otherwise, we would have had a full presentation. This was all presented to the Recreation Facilities Task Force, and they reviewed this. The point that we want to discuss tonight was if they were going to make a recommendation that this was a direction that we would go, then this decision about adding the structure to the building, the additional $21,000, is what we would consider. At this point in time, I would say, we, the city does not have any more money to put towards the project. So, we would have to, we'd have to be doing the numbers based on full investment from Iowa State Bank as a partner, if that can work. I think our decision is going to be based on...
What I'd hate to do is miss the opportunity, because these numbers could be, could change, you know, with other donors or what have you. But if we miss the opportunity to put solar on the building, you know, we'll never be able to do it on the roof. And that'll be more expensive.
If we put in these $20,000 worth of structure on the roof and the utility room, then we could do it next year.
At any time.
Anytime. So, that's the thing that you're saying we should do.
That's correct.
And the savings, just one last question, just on your scenario there. The savings you're saying we would save over 20 years, but, I mean, that includes paying off...
That includes your initial investment.
Paying off, I mean, after we pay for...
Yep. So, with that, there's probably around an 8% return on investment with your investment and the money that you would get in savings from the energy savings.
But you'd still have to budget what the electric would have been had you not done this, and know what that difference is, and put it away instead of budgeting annually on what your energy costs are at that point.
Well, you're going to have to pay those utility bills with or without this.
Because the city has to look at it in those terms, I would believe. You know, we don't predict that we're going to have a $1,000 a month bill if we didn't have solar. So, when our solar bill comes in, it's 400, and we have 600 that we're putting away somewhere in order to pay this off.
You'd be transferring what you would be paying in your utility bill to this instead.
What we would have been paying in the utility bill. So, and again, you're saying you need to budget a larger amount for your utility bill on an annual basis so that you can save a portion of that back to pay for this.
No.
Then, how do we pay it off?
Essentially, but...
How do you pay it off, then? If you also do something like that?
With your utility payments. Just strictly with your utility payments. So, and at what year are you finished paying that?
Between nine and 11, based on...
So, after, so the return on investment, Darren, is the first 11 years through your utility bill payments, nothing added, you're paying down your borrowing. After year 11, what you're saving, what you need...
Now, you don't have a utility bill. And then, that adds up as it would be if you wouldn't have the solar.
You may not have zero utility bill, but you would have a greatly reduced utility bill, and that's your savings. So, long-term, that's what you're going to save. But your initial commitment is paid off just strictly through your utility bill payments for the first 11 years.
We're basically putting on an energy efficiency device, so your existing utility bill will be drastically reduced because of it.
And would this, would the solar just be for the rec center? I mean, it wouldn't also go to the indoor pool or the...
Well, we would be looking, that's why we put in a sub-meter into this, to section off a portion of the new rec center. So, section that off mainly the large loads like the air conditioning, and then we would focus on those more specifically, because we can model that much easier. It would give us the ability to stay out of a large rate, which is what the rec center is on now, where they pay very little. We can transfer that into a better rate that works for solar.
But again, this is just for the rec center. It's not, you're not paying, we're not going to use this solar, you're not going to have enough energy left over to heat the pool, water in the winter or something like that?
This is rated, just, they did their figures just based on what the projected energy use would be for that building.
For the rec center, yeah.
So, Scott, you had a point?
I want to point out, we did quite a bit of work with energy efficiency. We entered Alliance Energy's commercial reconstruction program. We worked with White Group. There's been a significant amount of work trying to really reduce the overall load of this building. I think the main point is, whether we were to do a power purchase agreement or some sort of other financing, there are lots of different energy loans that are available through the state. There are grants, there are other ways that we could possibly finance it. The big question in my mind is, if we don't look at making sure the load can handle the solar on the roof, then we're looking at a ground-mounted solar if we wanted to do that. And that would be quite a bit more expensive. So, whether we were to look at, you know, I would imagine we would have to bid a project like this. It wouldn't just be Ideal Energy. It would have to go to bid for a project like this. So, whether it was financing through a PPA or going through any other business, I would really encourage us to think about making sure that if that's what we would like to do, is have solar on the building, we're going to pay for it now or we're going to pay for it later.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Tom, did you have another point?
If I could just make a quick point, I agree with Scott 100%.
Yeah, so that the folks at home can hear you.
They don't want to hear me. I think it's really, the program is great, and it is good. When we think about any vendor who's loaning us the money and getting an 8% return, that is after we put the $21,000 into it and the 75. So, I just want to make sure we're all reading the same numbers, that what we're really talking about, either, we don't have the 75, but it's really 21 plus that. So, still a worthwhile project if we can figure out how to do it.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. And the timeline for our decision on at least the roof reinforcements is immediate, because that's got to go into the bid documents, correct? Thanks, Troy and Scott. Okay. Discussion on that, Council?
How much does that actually change it, though, Tom, as far as the design? Because why couldn't that be something we can dwell on a little bit and have a change order later?
I get it, come up here. We were actually very hopeful that we could do this as a bid alternate, but Newman Munson and Carly Nelson said, when we're dealing with the main structure, it's hard to have that as a bid alternate, and they wouldn't suggest we do that. We also have to go through and do the design work itself. Newman Munson said they can do the design work within our current budget, not changing our dollars. But to do it after the fact is going to be...
So, did they say what it was specifically? Was it a stronger gauge steel?
Yeah, I'm sure it's like...
Whatever it is, it's probably something like that.
It's strengthening, I think of it in terms of snow load, but it's adding one, 2.5 a pound per square foot?
2.6.
2.6, excuse me, 2.6. And on that structure, it's, I mean, it's not, it's done every day.
Right.
But it needs to be designed that way.
So, they're buying different steel likely than what they're...
Okay, but yeah, but that's, I guess my point is, if it's not, if the design isn't different, you're just changing the steel. Why couldn't that just be a change order later? Oh, we're going to do that.
Well, it is a different design, so...
Okay.
So, it's both?
Beyond my knowledge, other than the architects and the construction manager have told me it's a different design and that we need to go to bid with the design of the building. Alternates of adding this or that apparently are allowable, but this is a major structural issue.
Okay. Melanie, any comment on that?
Beyond my scope, too.
Okay. John?
Please. Adding that much roof load will change the arch beams, it changes the footings, it changes the purlins, and it'll change the decking, maybe not the decking, but it changes all those internal structures. And when they're bidding these things, they're getting firm prices from vendors and steel mills. And to add that later, it's going to be a huge problem. I mean, you pay through the nulls.
Okay. So, you know, I bid projects all the time when you have that scenario, and then you have another scenario. So, why can't we have them bid both scenarios? And then, we decide later what we want to do.
Well, you're paying for two designs in this case, yeah, because you'd have to have a set of plans that shows with the reinforced and changed purlins, footings and all of that. And then, you'd have to have a set of plans that show without that as part of it. And while it may be a small section of the plans, in the grand scheme of things, it's quite a type of design work that has to be done.
Well, I think it's pretty clear, good, I think it's pretty clear that we should do it.
But if they agree to do the design work for no extra, what does it matter?
The design that they're designing is more expensive, and the task force is tapped out in there.
Right, but what I'm saying is, why not just have the contractors bid on both designs? And then, we can decide later.
But Jessica, for, really, for $20,000 more on the cost of the total project, if we're looking at potential savings...
But it's not just $20,000 more, it's...
But we're not doing all that later. It's a matter of, we're investing now with the fact, and however much it costs later, it might cost, if we don't do it right away, it might cost more later, it might cost less. The cost of solar has come down. You know, there might be better technology, or maybe we don't ultimately need such a big load on the roofs later. But to me, it seems really short-sighted not to include it now, because the potential is there, and the numbers work out to our favor. So, I mean, it doesn't, if it doesn't cost us anymore to do both bids, I'm not against it. But I wouldn't vote for, I know how I'm going to vote then, I might as well vote that way now.
I just think it'd be nice to see more numbers before we make final decisions on how...
Numbers on the initial cost of the structure?
Yeah, well, on the solar portion of it, and what it's actually going to look like.
Are you suggesting that we make the roof improvements now and then put the solar on five years from now?
I'll put the solar on whenever we decide to, but I think right now, tonight, what we need to do is decide whether or not we're going to include the $20,000 additional infrastructure into the building. And to me, it seems really short-sighted not to include it. I think, let's just find the money. And I think if you look at this budget that we have, it's, I think we have enough wriggle room even from the city's side in there.
My gut reaction is, if you're going to do this improvements on the roof for the solar system, put the solar system on right away. Otherwise, I think it's a waste of time.
Well, the issue there is the $73,000, so that's adding...
Spending $21,000 now on the off chance that they'll get done five years from now, I think is a bad idea.
Well, I don't know, five years is fair.
Or three years.
It, it may be six months, it may be a year, just based on where we are once we're really into the project and through, we know what our total costs are, or if there's any success in raising some, some additional funds to support that.
I agree that 20,000 is a small number compared to all this, but it's all the, we just keep adding, 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 you know what I mean?
But at least in this one.
And you know, we sit and have these conversations about where's the money and where are we going to get this and all that, and it's those difficult conversations to have, and then when we're talking about, oh yeah, we'll just add another 20, you know, it, it's hard.
I agree with you Jess, but this one is adding to save us money. I mean, this is making the building more efficient for us, and so, or potential, I mean, for, at least put building.
Well, I mean, it is, it's, it, that is a very important point, because, you know, operationally going into the future, we really don't know exactly where we are, and anything that we can do right now to mitigate those costs is an important thing to do. Tom?
I, I just wanted to add that, you know, we don't have exact numbers on what the savings and all of this would be, or we could bring you these firm numbers, but we've got a lot of investigating to do. The unfortunate thing is, we're at, we're at this, now I'm going to get in trouble with the task force. We can take more time, Jessica, to ask and get Newman Munson here and to answer your question. We can do that, absolutely. What we, what they're advising us now is, Tom, you need to go with one design, and they need to come and answer that.
I understand, I understand.
To stay on this timeframe.
But what I can tell you, we don't, we don't know enough today to know whether you or I would make this investment, or who would make the investment, because we don't know the real savings numbers. We're, we're taking some pretty, pretty good guesswork, it looks really good, but it is talking about an invest, investment return of 8 to 10%, and, you know, doesn't take long to shift those numbers to make them something different, so, but, tonight's the night, and, and the task force is recommending that we somehow figure out how to do this. We just don't know in the short time.
The roof, the roof structure.
If we delayed releasing the bid, delay the project to allow for this, man, I know there's people who are going to yell at me on this one, but, I mean, that's your alternative. If, if we can't do it tonight, delay putting out bids, delay the project, but please say the city council did that, not the.
So we, yeah, so delay would be three weeks, if, if you chose to do that.
Well, this timing obviously isn't ideal, no pun intended, guys, but this power purchase agreement ruling is pretty recent, and it changes the game. It makes it so that we can have solar and realize those savings in that investment without a large upfront cost, this idea of having this investor come in and put the ray in.
Hypothetically, but we haven't seen that in numbers yet.
Well, they exist, and those numbers.
How long would it take to get that put together?
For, if we chose a system size, we could have it done. The one thing that we're lacking right now is the energy profile of the building. So, that's how we drive our numbers, but we can suggest what the energy profile is, and then give you a number for a system size. So what I just gave you is a system size of 120 kilowatts of power, of solar panels.
But tonight, we're.
And I can tell you what the savings are off those panels.
Again, the timing's not ideal because we don't have all the details, but we do need to decide if we're going to make the building itself solar-ready. If we don't, if we want to put solar in later, it's going to be ground-mounted, it's going to cost us more, so, that's the decision tonight, can we float $21,000, not put that burden on the task force? So, basically taking ownership of finding those funds, we could find donors potentially, grants, whatever, but a roof-mounted solar array is a lot less expensive, and the type of roof this is and the orientation is perfect for solar, it'll look a lot like the library, right? Yep, so, this is our first new building since the Go Green Plan was put in place, and it is what we're about, and this is a way we can, to fund this with the minimal investment upfront is ideal, and, so I'm for finding that $21,000. We don't have to pay for it right now, we just need to commit to doing it.
Well, I know the mayor, he gave the council this, a little global budget for the project. I don't know if anyone else has this, but if we want to talk about it, at this point, this might be, you know, at least talking about how, where we might come up with this 20,000 in this global budget, and you had a, you had a little presentation here?
Right, what we're going to do a little bit later in the meeting is, we're going to review the financing proposal that Piper Jaffery is, is presenting for raising the $3.75 million in, in bonding that we're going to be doing, of which 750,000 is going to be TIF borrowing. So the, the sheet that you have with their, with the numbers on the global budget side, you'll see uses of funding in the shaded green area, there's $3 million, and that's the referendum amount that was approved for the pool, recreation amount, 243,993, that's what we're designating towards the land, of, of which we have $210,000 in there, leaving $33,993. That is the area I was going to suggest that we plug in the $20,000 shortfall that we had mentioned from the fundraising, which would leave about $13,000, John, so that, you know, some, some addition there, and then the other area, recreation project with sidewalk safety and site, $49,000, Melanie, that, that sounds right, I saw budgets of yours that had 50, but we're in the, we're in the ballpark at 49? Okay, so there, there is some room in that number, there's $33,000 in borrowing that we are going to be doing already, 20 of which we could, you know, put towards this fundraising shortfall, we have to resolve a specific amount to the CAT grant as, as part of balancing that fundraising picture, so that's something that we were going to do a little bit later, but to answer your question, John, there is still yet a little bit money, a little bit more money in that as well.
So there's 13?
Yeah, so, probably, let's say about half of it.
At least, I don't know about the other seven.
Well, the other eight. Because.
21, 22, yeah, yeah.
You're already adding 20 for the funding.
Yeah. Travis would have to explain that. So, and then, you know, the remainder, we're, again, we'll be doing, you know, we'll be funding, we'll be doing this through our capital projects funds as we build, build this, so that's, that's where you would put, you'd be putting this additional $10,000 in our capital projects, so it would, it would come out of that budget, and you would fund that budget in a way that, that, that could cover that in the, in the next budget cycle for 14, 15.
Presuming all the bids came up to the point.
Yeah, well, that, that, I, I think we're, we're pretty assured we're going to have that, because right now, we're talking about bid alternates for, you know, for a number of different pieces of this, but we're going to stay within budget, so. I'm getting a slow nod. Okay.
And fundraising for this project isn't officially done, we could fundraise specifically for making the building solar-ready.
And that might be an attractive.
For somebody, yeah, or group of people, they may want to tip in for that.
Okay, getting another, another nod from Tom, who's done 95% of the fundraising.
Tom's cashed out right now.
Thanks. Anyway.
Still continuing, we got kind of a neat gift last week, so, you know, it's happening, but our, our unfunded wants are still big.
Right, and again, you know, the, the fundraising portion of it at this point would more likely go towards the $73,000 cost for the, our portion of that as opposed to this 21,000, I'd rather see this be signed off on as part of the building construction, building design.
So maybe you're saying, okay, we're within 8,000 if we, if we consider the outline you just gave us, and what you're saying is, just don't worry about it, to put in the capital, put in the capital.
Well, that's, that's up to you.
And, and we'll worry about it later?
Right, you budget it later, not, not worry about it later, you budget it later.
Worry about it, and then we'll pay for it later.
You budget in your 14, 15 capital projects budget.
Which is funded through, which is funded through, I mean, you know, how do we, how do we fund the capital projects budget other than by borrowing money, I guess, right?
It helps to have the revenue offset the expenditures.
I mean, and, I mean, we're kind of, we're cutting our local option pretty close.
It isn't a pretty picture.
Well, I suppose the other thing too is you can, you can add to this borrowing that you're doing right now, you can add $10,000 to your TIF borrowing, presuming that the, you know, that the revenue is there to support that as well. We're not going to be doing any final approval on, on this until our January meeting, so you could also put it in there, and we could discuss with Travis, you know, the, the revenue structure that's, that's paying back this portion of the, of the TIF.
I'm open to that.
And there is, there is room in, in there, from, from a revenue side. So I entertain a motion then to approve the expenditure amount of $21,000 towards the project to reinforce the roof in preparation for solar, not committing to a solar project at this time, but just the construction of the building.
So move.
Move by Revelinsky?
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any other discussion?
I, I really am uncomfortable making those kind of decisions without hard numbers. I really, I think the idea sounds great, I think the, you know, hypothetically, everything sounds cool, but not having hard numbers where we can really see what the savings are going to be and all that is really unsettling to me to proceed with spending $20,000 just to, or whatever it's going to be, to, to do this plus additional money, so, that's my only comment, I think that, I think we do too much of that, and I, I, I want to see the numbers.
Troy, when you, when you estimated the energy usage of the building, I mean, if, if in fact, it didn't use that much energy, I mean, couldn't we use extra load to help offset, like I was saying, the pool or the other?
A fraction of the energy that will be needed by the building?
It's only a fraction.
Yes, but the savings will be there, you know, if we're looking at.
You should come up here.
This isn't the first solar project we've done, and we don't do solar projects unless they make money. So, that's the idea. This is pretty time-tested, we can predict what the sun is going to bring in over the year, and we predict what the panels, the size, all that is going to return, in kilowatts, it's just that price on that, that energy. But this is pretty clear what it's going to bring, it's just what size do we ultimately go on there to come up with, you know, when Channing is saying we need the load, then we would, we would set our size in accordance to that, but the savings will be similar, looking at an 8% return on investment right now.
And I love the idea, don't get me wrong, but, but you understand this way better than I do in the whole financing portion of it, and what we're going to put, you know, our output's going to be and everything, that's what I'd like to see numbers of, and, you know, see what that story looks like before just saying, okay, let's do this.
Well, again.
Yeah, well, I would, Troy, I would, I would just say that, I would just ask the question then, the presentation that you made to the facilities task force, based on 125 kilowatt array, what numbers were you using for load? Do you feel, did the construction folks feel you were in, in the ballpark? What was the, what was the basis? Yeah, for what you originally presented?
Well, the tricky bit about the energy load.
And introduce him and.
Channing Congdon from Ideal Energy.
So kind of the tricky bit with the energy load that we're looking at is that it's not, it's on demand charge rate, which means that you pay very little for a kilowatt hour, but quite a bit for the energy draw, the kilowatt, so.
It's an on-demand rate, and that's, that's the utilities rate?
That's the utilities rate to the rec center, right? And so, the, the way that we're trying to work around that is segmenting off a portion of the demand draw, and saying, okay, we're going, we're going to take this part, and we're going to pay for it with solar.
Okay.
So that will reduce both the kilowatt draw and also the kilowatt hours needed overall. And so, that is why we're kind of saying, that, that means we need the energy profile of that, of the submeter draw in order to calculate the actual cost savings. Like, we can just rough up some numbers and say, okay, well, we think that it should be in this ballpark, but we can't give any hard numbers until we get the actual energy profile.
So let's talk about where the savings come from. What's the cost to generate a kilowatt through solar, and what is the retail charge?
So, the PPA price that we're looking at is eight to nine cents, the price that you'd be paying for that on the 600 rate is currently at 9.85 or more, with the adjusted energy cost.
So maybe two cents per kilowatt hour is your, is your savings, or is what your investor is going to be recouping?
So the investor's recouping the nine, eight to nine cents PPA.
Right.
So, and so the, the two cent difference would be actual savings to the end user.
Right.
So the, so after the system's paid for, then you, you cut off.
You cut off the eight cents.
You cut off the eight cents.
And you're producing, and you're producing it at what cost per kilowatt hour at that point?
At that point, you're just getting, you just have the operations and maintenance of the solar array, which is kind of less than a penny.
Right, so that's, that's essentially where these performas work out over time, and to have a return on investment.
Yeah.
Okay.
In a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. So numbers, so, to answer your question, the numbers should come in and look obviously favorable over a long period of time, it's, I think what it's going to determine is what the ROI, the return on investment, is going to be until the system's fully paid for.
Right.
Is that going to be nine years, is it going to be 13 years, and that's going to all be based on what their eventual estimates are going to be based on the actual load? Okay?
I just, my point is, I don't like making these decisions when we're under the gun, I like having the facts, and I like the time to actually know where the money's going to come from and how it all works, so, that's, I don't like, got to make it now.
Yeah, I understand there's a little chicken in the egg here for these guys as well, because, you know, the engineers want to know what building they're going to be building, and based on that, they're going to know a little bit more about the energy load that they're going to be proposing to them so that they can do final estimates, but I think rough estimates will show what they're talking about tonight.
With that 25-year savings, there obviously could be some fudge room back and forth, but that's point of savings versus the investment, the overall return.
Yeah, because after the power purchase agreement, which is already within that timeframe, 10, 11 years, we already realize the savings.
That's correct.
After that, the panels are ours, generating essentially electricity for the building. And what's the, the life warranty on those is?
Expected life is about 40, 40 years on panels. Inverters, we plan that in there with a 15-year inverter replacement, we can up the warranty now, they sometimes go to 25 years, but we, we plan that in with our numbers.
Right, so you, you know, essentially, also, if you're looking at a 10 to $12,000 savings annually in your operations budget, that's kind of the, the number that I come up with based on that 230,000 over 25 years or something that you were referring to.
Oh, correct.
Yeah, so for our budgeting, that's obviously significant. Okay, thanks Troy. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
I kind of need clarification of the, is it supposed to be in with the financing? Is that where, because when I write my minutes, it's just going to say approve 21,000, and when that day comes, I need to know where to take it out of.
Fine, we can put that in the motion if you want.
You want it to come out of the financing? That we're, in the borrowing?
It'll come out of the TIF borrowing.
Right, additional, right, additional TIF borrowing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just 13,000.
21.
No, 13,000.
My, my motion was.
The other 8,000 was going to be next year.
That was original suggestion from the mayor.
That's the last suggestion.
Okay, well, I'm not sure of how clear my motion was.
I just, yeah.
No, what we discussed, what we. So the last discussion, Doug, was that we can add the borrowing to, we can add to this TIF borrowing that we're doing here in January, okay? So we would come back with a different number on that right now.
That was, that was the spirit of my motion if I did make it clear. That's what I intended. I can restate it if you want.
No, that's okay. I think, yeah. Okay, Revolinsky.
Pay that on TIF.
Yes.
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes to you and yes to you.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
I still need to see some more numbers on this and I'm, I'm completely with Jessica. I hate being under the gun on this. This is the fourth council meeting in a row practically to do that. Something that we had to decide that night without solid information and speculation only. And I'm going to vote no on this.
Flornoy?
If we had a solar system in place and already funded, I would vote yes, but in view of the fact that we do not, I'll vote no.
Hammers?
Yes. Okay, motion passes five to two. And we will discuss with our, with our financing folks adding additional borrowing to the TIF portion. Thank you, Orin, for the presentation. And again, apologies that there was a short timeframe on this. But I think in the end, I think it would be wise to have the, the building prepared for it. Hopefully it will happen sooner rather than later.
But I just ask that, once we are asked to make that decision, that we have solid numbers on a spreadsheet we can look at and paint the whole picture.
Absolutely, particularly if we're going to be making that investment, Jessica, I agree with you a hundred percent. Okay, thank you. Now council will move on to our resolutions and action items. We have a change order for the outdoor pool. Melanie, if you can, run us through that, please.
I have to go first. Oh, that's going to be stuff I have to follow. So the change orders for a total of sixty thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. If we're using a three-point-eight million-dollar pool budget, that budget left one hundred and forty thou, one hundred and forty thousand eighty dollars left for change orders. So this is within budget because it is a change to the contract amount. I wanted to bring it in front of the council. There are.
Describe the, the changes, Melanie, yeah.
Yeah, there are ten items on this. I will say that there have been some additional optional change orders presented, such as upgrading the umbrellas and some other things. And those decisions, I've encouraged Derek to wait on those decisions until we know more about the overall construction of the pool. So these are more or less essentials. The number one is egress path revision when the state approved. We went to bids without the state having approved the pool layout, with the exception, knowing that Burbach generally produces pools that meet the state code. They came back with three issues, one of them being having a paved egress path on the northwest corner, which is item number one. Item number two was requiring additional bathroom space. This had to deal with the gym and the pool were both counting the bathroom space. So it was, a decision was made that the pool would add some bathrooms, the gym would add some bathrooms so that both budgets were seeing that additional cost. So that's really where the largest change order is. That's item number two for forty-nine thousand roughly. Item number three was additional rock underneath the slide. We found some bad soils underneath the slide that had to get replaced. We saved some money by not having to extend the sanitary sewer as far as we thought. The only optional item on here is adding integral color to the splash pad. This would save Derek from having to paint the splash pad and then also making sure that the corresponding silica is added so that the splash pad doesn't get slippery. This just makes it color-integrated. Item number six is savings by changing to fiberment, fiber reinforcement instead of wire reinforcement. Burbach was acceptable of this change. Oh, I'm sorry. Item number four was sewer service on the east side and item number seven was sewer service on the north side, both savings. Item number eight was a change to LED fixtures. Item number nine was another item from the state that required a one and three-quarter inch fence opening instead of a two-inch fence opening on the chain link. And item number ten is a zero-cost change, which was moving the transformer. Derek would like to put an overall walking track. I don't remember if it's a third mile or a half mile all the way around. Burbach had placed the transformer in the middle of that track and luckily we were able to review that and get that moved before it was installed. So that is zero cost. Again, the overall change order cost is sixty thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars, forty-nine thousand of which is due to the bathrooms.
Okay. Thanks, Melanie, again, council.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Two of the change orders our owner requested, is that Derek making those decisions?
Let me, I, can you tell me which two?
Well, he already told us about the coloring of the concrete.
The color and what was.
And the other one is the fixtures.
The fixtures, yes, those were both Derek requested.
And how are we on our budget based on this sixty thousand dollars?
Yep. If you're using a three-point-eight pool budget, there was a hundred and forty thousand available, so you take sixty off of that and that is eighty thousand dollars left for additional change orders between now and the end of the project.
So it came under bid that much, is that it?
Yeah.
You expecting additional change orders?
That's about what we need for the solar.
Are you saying that one forty is the? So first off, I need to be clear.
Those are ex-reserved money we can spend.
I need you right here, pal. So we have a project, a project for eight million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. In there we have some contingency funds. Are you saying, I'm, I'm trying not to separate our projects because we have one funding rate and I, sometimes numbers get a little mixed up. So is that a part of the contingency fund within the pool construction? And so it's already within the eight million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand? No funds to be raised?
Well, the last meeting that the task force had, had was moved and I wasn't able to attend it. So frankly, I'm not a hundred percent sure where the budget on the task force is at.
But that money's, that money is committed, right?
But three, Tom, three-point-eight is.
Hundred and forty thousand is committed.
Is the number for, for the pool. That remains the number for the pool.
Did they rethink it when the bid came in low, they can use another hundred and sixty for the, for the rec center, is that it?
When the bid came, that, okay, so now I understand where the numbers are at. So if I could just offer this up?
Okay.
The, when the bid came in, we knew it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars under what we had estimated. At the same time, we were dealing with what were the bathroom costs on the other half of the project and these other costs. We took advantage of that hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So you already spent that in your.
And pulled it in, and pulled it into the other project?
Pulled it in, so if you figure the whole project cost.
Can't do that. In March, the council approved four-point-seven for a gymnasium and three-point-eight for a pool. They separated them. It's right in the minutes. They have been planning on the, the three-point-eight all along.
Okay, let's, that's fine. So now we're short on our fundraising for the gymnasium side of a total project of eight million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So we're short there. We're, so I'm just saying, change orders within a contingency fund, and I think we had some contingency funds still left. So if this is a change within a contingency fund that made up that number, we're okay. That's why I'm asking the question, because I want to know today.
What was that contingency fund, Melanie, do we know?
The last budget that I prepared, which was prior to the meeting I wasn't able to attend, had fifty thousand in contingency, but that brought the pool budget up to three-point-seven, not three-point-eight. So whether the projects are separate or not, I've never been clear on what the budgets are. There's a lot of people, a lot of people looking at the numbers and it's been.
Yep.
All right, so these, but the, what your, the change orders that you're proposing, change orders that you're proposing tonight, though, are mandatory change orders based on.
All with the exception of the.
Up to about.
The color.
Yeah, the lights.
And I believe the light fixtures were ordered because they were LEDs instead of.
That's contingency fund money that's, has to be there for future change orders, right? Should they arise?
Well, I mean, these are, this is where you spend your contingency. It's on change orders, so we are.
But if a mandatory change order comes up six months from now, that money has to be there.
Yes. But.
We can't commit to another idea.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
Tyler, we.
So I think we have, I think we have to get our budgets together.
Yeah.
So I don't think we can approve this this evening. So we'll just, we'll table this at this time and I think we need to get finance committee together to look at this. Okay. Thanks, good catch. Okay, council, the, the next item then would be the twenty thousand dollars that we spoke about, which would be the additional city contribution that we would report to the CAT folks for their grant. That would be the twenty thousand that we spoke of. That is within our recreation project other category on the TIF financing for the form that we were looking at.
Wasn't, wasn't that twenty thousand, though, approved at least one meeting ago? Because there was a discussion in the Ways and Means Committee meeting.
No, it was never, it was not, it was not brought before the council.
We just talked about Ways and Means.
It was mentioned at the council meeting, though, it's part of the minutes, but.
But we never voted on it.
You didn't vote on, we didn't vote on it? No, you, you approved the twenty thousand.
To come out of the.
No, it was for something.
It was with the housing project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But no, we did not approve.
This was, this, this was approved out of Ways and Means, but we did not bring it to the next council meeting. So this is the first meeting that we're discussing it.
Okay, so it was mentioned with no action then from the Ways and Means Committee minutes?
Well, the Ways and Means, the Ways and Means did approve.
Ways and Means had recommended to the rest of the council to go along with this, but the council never approved it. And so, I mean, but this was really.
Kind of being nickel and dime, that's twenty thousand, twenty.
In your, in your report.
We get our twenty thousands mixed up here.
You referenced that we would be discussing this in the future. I'm not even sure, you mentioned an amount, but this is the first time we've discussed it at the council level.
Yes.
You were vague.
Okay, well, now let me be very clear. So this is regarding the twenty thousand dollar shortfall in the fundraising? Is that, is that what we're talking about here?
Correct.
And we've already discussed it at length here with Tom. And so Tom was very generous to, to go ahead and add, add to his personal contribution to the project half of the shortfall. And somehow, it was fifty thousand shortfall and some.
Forty thousand.
It was only forty. So again, the point was, going back to this global budget that the mayor handed out, and this is what I referred to in, in my last motion, was, Mayor, you want to explain it again?
So under the.
Come on.
Under the category of, under the category of recreation other, at the current time, the only thing we have designated in there is two hundred and ten thousand dollars towards a land purchase.
That's the point I did.
So the additional thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-three is something that is, were estimates and it was additional, additional borrowing of which the twenty thousand dollars that we're discussing right now would be included. And if we decide to add for the solar improvements on the roof, then we would add to that, to that category likely in our borrowing.
Right, which we, we already voted on the spirit of this. And so the point was, there's an extra thirty-three thousand dollars in there that's not budgeted. It's not, there was no expense towards it, until now. And so this is the point that we were going to put the twenty thousand dollars towards the shortfall in fundraising for the project and then we're going to take in another twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand dollars and put it, we've already voted on that part. And so this is a two-part, this is use of this extra thirty-three thousand, but we're going to add to it by eight thousand dollars more. So we're going to add.
Can I rephrase that?
Please.
I thought you were going to be very clear.
There's thirty-three thousand dollars in this second line I have right here, recreation project other.
Yes.
Twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand we already spent on the roof.
Yes.
That leaves us.
No.
Well.
In essence.
Well, we just voted that would come out of the, this budget.
Thirteen out of that for the roof and other, so does it add into TIF?
No, not TIF. We said we would increase.
We would, we'd increase this. You have two elements here, Doug. You have three million dollars in general obligation bonds and seven hundred and fifty thousand in, in TIF spending. And what we're proposing, and this is something that we will deal with at our next meeting, is what the additional borrowing would be in this category for TIF to, to accommodate the twenty-one thousand that, that we would like to add.
In addition to the shortfall for the rec center.
For purposes of tonight's meeting, we're asking that twenty thousand of this be designated towards the shortfall. And then at your next meeting, we're going to come back and we're going to give you a figure on what we would need to add to the total to accommodate the twenty-one thousand that we approved.
The balance coming out of that money.
Yes, right. So, well, you would, no, you would add to that.
John's going to use.
Is that clear, Jess?
It is, as mud.
It's not clear to me.
I'm not clear on that.
Okay, once again, there, there's two hundred and ten thousand which, of this recreation project other, which was, it was for land purchase?
Correct.
That we could use TIF money for. But even though the land only costs two hundred and ten thousand, we have in the budget to borrow two hundred and forty-three thousand. And so we, we have in the borrowing an extra thirty-three thousand dollars that's not.
That we don't necessarily have to borrow.
That we don't necessarily have to borrow.
You know, and, and now we're going to borrow that, plus we're going to borrow another eight thousand dollars on top of that through that TIF borrowing.
So just to be, just to be clear, the, the presentation to the Ways and Means Committee was this twenty thousand dollars is to preserve one million dollars in a grant from the, from the CAT program.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I want you to keep that in mind when we're discussing leverage.
Kind of just mention, under West Burlington TIF, Washington State Bank should be within that district, which is going to significantly jump up your revenues.
Thank you. Thank you for that reminder, absolutely. Thank you very much. Yeah, so we can do some new projections based on the value of that building, Adam?
Yes.
And, and gets.
I believe it's already in the zone, if it's not, you can easily amend it.
It is in the zone, yeah, it absolutely is in the zone.
So that gives us more increment as a revenue source to pay this back. And we need this twenty thousand to secure the one million dollar CAT grant, is that correct, Ed?
Yes.
I vote in favor of taking it from TIF.
Doesn't mean that be a motion then. One second there.
Second, did you make that motion?
Motion by Hallie, second by Revolinsky.
Wow. Confusing.
Still his motion.
Yeah.
Let me explain it again.
No, we got it, I got it, I got it.
No more.
Yeah, I want to hear that motion again.
Okay, yeah, what is the motion?
I move to use twenty thousand from the, well, it's, what do we call it? The West Burlington TIF?
No, just a, just TIF borrowing. You can just call it our TIF borrowing.
TIF borrowing for this project, for the rec center project, to cover the shortfall.
In fundraising, yes.
In fundraising. Thanks, John. We did it together.
So we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Next, council. Uh, next, counsel, we are going to look at the, uh, let's see.
Timeline?
Yeah, the timeline for the, from Piper Jaffery on our, on our bonding, as you can see is reported, there were several local banks and one bank from Cedar Rapids who all are going to participate in, in this sale of bonds. There was a uniform presentation for twenty years at three and a half percent, which is a very favorable rate at this point in time. We'll be taking formal action on this in the month of January, but Travis asked us to motion an approval for the proposed, the, the funding proposal, bond proposals. So entertain a motion to, to approve the financing proposal.
So moved.
Moved by Revolinski. Second by Hamilton.
What choice do we have?
All those...
Really?
We don't.
We don't? We don't have a choice?
Well, I wouldn't...
Well, we already committed, I mean, we committed to that pool and recreation project, and this is a TIF project where we're...
This is the timeline for the borrowing, and that's what we're approving as an action item, is the timeline, as we see, and, and the only two things that are left are the two meetings in January that we have to accomplish according to this timeline. I mean, what else are we looking at? Because January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, next month, we're going to have a closing rate, closing date on bond funds received, you know?
So we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, counsel, we have accepting an approval for the employment agreement for Michael Harmon, our city administrator, and did everyone receive Pat Callahan's email this afternoon? You've got a chance to read that, so the, the final performance evaluation and reference checks with the mayor and city council and Crystal Lake came out stellar for Michael. They really hate to lose him. They understand that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for him and are happy for him going forward, but we would like to formally accept the employment agreement for Michael Harmon to begin on February sixteenth.
So moved.
Moved by Hammers?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have a presentation on the Housing Task Force, a set of recommendations for increasing and improving housing in the city of Fairfield. Adam?
So I believe you all received this in your email packet, but since it's kind of complex, I did print off one for everybody, the Lorax over there.
You don't get it.
So the first page of this packet, you're looking at the application that any developer interested in applying for tax increment financing on a housing project, whether that be redevelopment or new development, would fill out. That's giving the city a lot of the basic information they need to begin movement on, on the actual acceptance and creation of that TIF district and the urban renewal district. A number of the questions in there are referenced in the actual TIF objectives and policies and are requirements, such as what the investment level is going to be, what their experience level is, and actually have done housing before, having conversations with the city and what type of housing is being proposed. Seconds through sixth page are the actual policy. Do you want me to walk through that all, or do you want me just to field questions? I believe most council members have seen this.
Adam, would you just give us some background about how we arrived here?
Sure.
There's a lot, there's a lot of great work that's gone into this, and we just give a little background.
Last year, the city and FIDA commissioned a housing study in the city of Fairfield. Not unexpectedly, it showed there's a significant deterioration in the number of homes and neighborhoods in Fairfield and that there's pretty strong need for additional housing based off of what's going on, employment levels, particularly Dager Industries' expansion and Cambridge's continuing expansion. So that led to the creation of a Housing Task Force, which looked at a number of the issues brought up in the housing need assessment, such as creation of new housing, redevelopment of existing housing, some of the deterioration issues. There's a number of, there's eight recommendations. This is kind of a combination of the first two on the actual housing TIF policy. The importance of getting this one passed today at the city council meeting is, is that we set the expectations for developers come spring. So this is going to put a very clear guideline for developers in what they can expect to receive in financing through TIF, how they're going to pay for their infrastructure as they go forward. So, in the near future, it'd be nice to have this policy in place, if not tonight, or something similar to this, so that we can also begin marketing our housing policy to other developers as these projects become moving forward. So I guess you'll probably hear more from me on some of the other recommendations in the future, but this one basically provides a ten-year rebate for any new housing developments, whether that's market-rate housing or it's low to moderate income housing. The level of rebate changes based off of what type of housing is there. There's a state requirement that a certain portion of funds be set aside for low or moderate income housing. If that LMI housing is not met within the TIF area, then that money will be set aside and be used elsewhere in the city to fulfill that requirement. There is a possibility that the developer can request that the city apply for waiver through the states, and because this policy isn't something that's necessarily in place in other state, in other cities, it may be something we need to review on an annual basis, and that is, part of this policy is examining if this is working, are the incentives too high, are they too low? What is the existing housing need five years from now? We don't know right now. So, on the redevelopment side, it's a seven-year rebate. I should mention, on the new development side, if it is housing, market-rate housing, the rebate is restricted to the amounts of infrastructure being put in place, so that is street, water, sewer, and parks. Now, in most instances, the rebate won't even cover all of that because the infrastructure costs are so high, but there is a cap on that if it is market-rate housing. On redevelopments, you can only do a TIF rebate program if it is fulfilling the LMI requirements, or if it's in a blighted area, blighted areas or something that's determined by the city, so if you see the need, you can make the case that you cleared a blighted area, and in that instance, any type of housing can be redeveloped. For example, Broadway building, perhaps. You can look at the neighborhood, determine whether you consider that neighborhood a blighted area, and it could be redeveloped into either high-level condos or senior housing or LMI housing. In any instance, all that increment up to ninety percent would be rebated back to the developer to help pay for those renovation costs. And the need on the renovation side, as some of these older historic buildings, they're very expensive to rehab, and to make that a viable project, this is one, one possible way of going about that. So, um, this is the, kind of the combination of the first two recommendations from the Housing Task Force. If you've got any additional questions on it, I'd just point out the last two pages show kind of a guideline on the green incentive scorecard, new developments, scenarios where developers not fulfilling a certain level of these requirements, you can decrease, decrease that rebate down to eighty percent, or not. It's not strictly determined in the policy, but it is something that's mentioned, that the city will be taking a look at when determining the final rebate incentive. And the final page is just one scenario for you to take a look at in terms of what a rebate would look like for a project of about nine million dollars worth of value. So that's just simply a tool for a developer to take a look at and help determine what they would be looking at from an estimate, at least, for a rebate. There's no cost to the city on this. City does have to create the urban renewal district and does have to write the TIF. The expectation is that cost would be first paid back through the increment before any rebate goes back to the developer. In an instance in which no increment is actually generated, the development agreement would have a stipulation in there that the developer would be responsible for that, most likely. Again, that's, language included in the policy is a recommendation when you actually enter in that development agreement.
There's been a lot of work put into this by FIDA and Adam. He's done an excellent job, and this is a lot of work by the task force, and John Meyer has been really instrumental in these meetings, and, so, it's not something we've come to with hasty decision, and we've, we've revised several times, and this is our final draft for now, so, like, like he said, you guys have seen it before, so it's, it shouldn't be, there's not a whole lot new to it, and we've tried to really put it in place. And then this will be quarterly review, we, we left that in there, so it'll be, or yearly review.
First quarterly review, annually.
Yeah, so it'll come up. So our new city administrator will have a chance to take a look at this, and if we decide that there's anything that we want to change, we'll have the ability to do that.
And it is a policy, it's not a contract, it's not as if a developer can grab this, punch in a bunch of numbers, and we're obligated to do a TIF for that project. It's not the case. This is policy guiding this program that we're developing, but each developer, developer that came to the city would be dealt with by case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, has your committee voted to approve this policy?
Yes, yeah, we did. When did we do that? Last week? Or this?
It was last...
I've lost track of time, yeah. Last Wednesday we...
So then would you, would you make a motion to the council to recommend approving the Housing TIF policy?
Yes, I would make a recommended, recommendation, the motion that we approve this Housing TIF policy as it's written.
Okay, moved by Ledger Kaelin?
Second.
Second by Hallie. Discussion?
Just some discussion. I'm very in favor of this, and I, I applaud Adam for all the work that he's done, and that's a really good job now. Just two things I want to mention. One is of the somewhat, you know, forward-thinking policies that we, that we proposed in here that, that you didn't really point out here, but I, I think that, you know, worth saying in public to the community, there are three sections here that propose infrastructure within the TIF district must comply with the existing Fairfield subdivision code requirements, or if developed under a proposed urban development ordinance, meet the designated city engineer's approval, and that could include things like higher-density development, including rowhouses, patio homes, or other common wall construction, narrow, narrower streets as narrow as eighteen feet, creative drainage such as wetland rain gardens or detention instead of pipe-storm sewers, and common parking areas using alternative surfaces. So, these are innovative, and they're in here, I, I support that, but I wanted just to say publicly, not to just be a quiet paragraph that no one knows about. So that was one thing I just want to point out. The other thing is, um, I, you know, when we had our joint meeting with Ways and Means and property about this, I had brought up the point about...
Well, it was economic development and property.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Get it all straight there.
Whatever, community.
There was a bunch of us that got together.
Let's be clear, Jess. I had brought up at this point about, well, you know, the city could put in a lot of money to, you know, process a TIF project, and then if, if the developer backs out for some reason, we'd be at, at risk for that. So you put in, that, that proposal was accepted. Where is it in here? I mean...
Yes, it's in, it is in here. Let me find the number and the letter and everything else that's in there.
Is it, uh, three point two, number seven?
Three point...
Oh, no. No, that's not it.
Three, five, A.
Three, oh, yeah, three, five, A. TIF implementation fees.
Five. Yeah, Kristen Cooper from ILS actually did a couple of changes in here, and one of the rec, one of the changes in here is the requirement that the developer enter into a development agreement with the city, and within that development agreement, here you go, so for, um, two point one, four, so right before section three, at such time as a resolution of support for a TIF assistance is approved by the city council, the city council will require the developer to enter into a development agreement that establishes reasonable performance expectations regarding minimal assessment, which would cover the city, or development guarantee, or other security measures to cover TIF implementation increment costs if it does not materialize. So there's a number of ways to address it, and in that development agreement, it would address it, which is required according to the policy.
So we covered that base.
Okay, we covered that base. I, I was having some, not second, second thoughts, just saying, well, I, you know, I want to make sure that we're not too punitive to the, but we, but since we're not putting an amount here, it's still...
Well, and the, the one way we did look at this as a positive for developers is actually the, the TIF implementation costs are limited to ten thousand dollars, which in most scenarios would cover all of those fees to implement a TIF district, but in a highly unusual situation or a very difficult TIF, it could go up to twelve or fifteen is possible. In that instance, the city would be covering the difference between that, and the developer now has the expectation that, okay, this is ten thousand dollars, no more, possibly less.
I mean, we have, we have one developer here, Tim Martin, so, I mean, are you familiar with this clause that I'm talking about? Do you feel that that's putting an obstacle in your way, or, I mean, are you comfortable enough with that, Martin?
I wasn't exactly sure whether the ten thousand would be, it looked like the developer would be liable for it, but they're not paying it upfront.
No, no.
That's your question, right? What happens if you get stuck with ten thousand dollars worth of work? So, so your city, it sounds to me like the city's taking the risk that we're liable up to ten thousand, I assume. Is that, now, how is it? Are we liable? In other words, we agree to pay it if we back out, and the city's going through all that?
So the actual TIF writing wouldn't take place until the project's fairly far along and before ground's broken, but at the point where you're ready to commit. So in the instance where something happens and the developer would stop, and the TIF had already been put in place, the fees had been assessed, then yes, the developer would potentially be responsible for that, if they'd already entered into the...
It's not reasonable, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other, any other questions?
Well, two points. One is, if the project moves forward, that's paid off by the TIF increment instead of the developer. And the two things I really like about this particular arrangement is zero cost to the city, using the urban renewal district and the increment created by the, the new property to help fund the infrastructure, but also that extra ten percent or more of the, the TIF funds will go towards LMI. So one of the things Darren was lamenting about, that decision we were forced to make quickly regarding the rehabilitation, we didn't have any funding...
That's right.
...for that. With this program, these new developments will fund our LMI program, so...
They'll have no difficulty with that, because you know where it's going to come from.
Yep, so in future years, under this agreement, you know, we should have some LMI funds available. So less stress for Darren.
This doesn't stress me. This type of work had a lot of thought and planning and a lot of committee time involved with it. These kind of decisions don't bother me from the standpoint that I know within the law and the way the TIF is structured, that we're going to get our money back, okay? The, the problems I had with the other issues are based on not knowing, and being asked to make a decision now, not knowing, okay?
Well, I'm saying...
This, I know there's, there's six people in here...
Gentlemen, I'm going to, I'm going to call, I'm going to call the questions. Please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen? Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay. It passes unanimously. Again, thank you to the committee, and thank you to Adam and FIDA for all of their work on this. I think it's a great piece to have in place going into 2015. It's a great message that we're open for business in Fairfield, and hopefully we attract some great projects. Next, council, we have approval of the sale price for Logan Apartments. That was going to be based on having received an appraisal for this meeting. The appraiser was not able to do that. I have some preliminary information we will discuss in closed session, but we will not be doing that, so we will table that item for our next meeting. Next, we have a resolution approving our partnership with Area 15 Regional Planning for financial support. This... They are not billing us at this point in time, but again, we are... This is for the next year, that we will be part of the Area 15 Governing Planning Commission, their umbrella and the services that they provide to us. They charge 44 cents per capita for a total of $4,164.16. So I entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the upcoming year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Hammers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, council, we have the third and final reading for our wastewater treatment usage charge. This will be our final reading. This will be our final public hearing as well, so at this point, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments from the public regarding the increase in user charges. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion to pass the ordinance from the third final reading.
I move to pass it to the final reading.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Third and final.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, in my report, I have two reappointments to the Park and Recreation Board for Terry Cochran and Janan Toohill. Entertain a motion to approve their reappointment to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. We'll move to committee reports. Economic Development Committee, Jessica.
You've basically heard it, so that's all.
Okay, we're all sat there. All right. Next, we'll ask Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
The committee met at 6:00 before the council meeting this evening. We had three items on our agenda, two of which were not asking for any recommendation or any move from the council. The third item was municipal customer water rates. We had a city come in and ask us if we would give them notice at least by December each year for any upcoming water rate increases. They aren't affected by sewer rates. They're just water purchasers. We can either do this through a resolution by the council that states that we will begin discussions with the municipalities come December each year, or we can put it into a policy with our waste... Our water superintendent and the water office up front that they would give us a reminder annually that we need to address this with the cities. What happens is they have the same budget timelines that we do, and they need to have that time period in December and January to be able to work out what their rate structures will be for the next coming fiscal year from July 1st through June 30th. So I'm going to leave it to the council to decide whether we want a resolution to do that, or if we want to just have that as a policy with our water superintendent. Is that?
I don't know that we really need a resolution.
Policy.
Policy is a better...
Your committee is recommending a policy?
My committee felt that a policy would do it, but we felt that, you know, we should at least mention it to the council that it could be done by a resolution as well. It can't really be part of an ordinance or of the water ordinance itself. It would be good for us to be a little more proactive in informing our municipalities that our customers, what type of rate increase they'll need to budget for for their upcoming year.
So we can make sure that our superintendent will keep it on his calendar for review and bring it to your committee each year. I think that should be fine from a policy standpoint. Any other comments? All right, thanks, Darren. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Michael, go ahead.
Sure. Scott Tim applied for and won a sustainable urban forestry training and assistant grant. This is a program by the state DNR Department of Natural Resources, and it's spread out over the next year. We had our first meeting last Friday. We had Darrell Biscar in attendance, Pam Craft, Melanie Carlson, myself on behalf of the council. They basically wanted a cross-section of elected officials and city staff, as well as we'll open this up to citizens to join. And it's basically going to cover proper tree planting, tree pruning, tree care, tree identification. I know that our street department has been called names that I can't say right now on the air, but people have been unhappy with the tree pruning jobs sometimes. This will be helpful in that regard, I suppose, in terms of training, but again, opening up to the public, anybody who's interested in this kind of thing can join in. So we'll announce the dates of those meetings publicly later. We set the dates at that initial meeting, but it's a great program, and I think it's going to do some good work for us. They're also going to plant, I believe, 50 trees as part of it or more in our public parks and such. So just another step in the planning for the future. In tree terms, 20 years is considered short-term planting for trees. They did talk about something interesting is that now it's being looked at by tree canopy rather than just number of trees. So when you lose a big tree, say, to EAB, and you replant a small tree, you've lost significant canopy. The canopy itself has benefits to... The shade that it provides actually can make the streets last longer. All this reports of the benefits of the shading of the trees to your infrastructure, your city infrastructure. Obviously, the stormwater runoff is an advantage to having the tree roots. The other advantage is school kids test higher when they can see trees out the window to school, reduces crime. It's very interesting. I've got this community benefits, public trees. I'll pass around, but since we're going to most likely be doing a new comprehensive plan next year, is that right, Ed? Are we up?
Yeah, I think that'll be Michael's decision in terms of timeline.
Okay. So this will be something we can include in that. It's basically a tree canopy plan. How many trees we have to plant each year to maintain and expand our tree canopy.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate the report. And congratulations to Scott on the grant award. Mellie, do you have any project reports for... Do you have anything listed just for administrative reports? I just wanted to check on that. So at this point in time, we will go into closed session, so entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Revolinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thanks.